Hey guys, so I am coming back. Hey guys, so I am, oh my gosh, I can't even speak right? Hey y'all, so I'm finna head to Trader Joe's because my classes y'all were so stressful. Like, it's not even funny. I'm about to put some sunscreen on. Got my black girl sunscreen. Um, this camera right now, I don't know what is going, is going on. If it takes y'all getting some school content, I'm here for it. Cause um, I'm not finna be bringing my whole Sony camera on campus. Cause it'd be like, it'd be so much. I don't think y'all understand how much it takes to like film, especially in school, you know? I've always wanted to see like a lot of college videos. And I started creating a lot of college videos, like my freshman sophomore year. And then I stopped really filming a lot of my like college experience, my junior year. I'm kinda mad about that because then I can't really reflect back on like how my junior year was. But I'm trying to pick up the camera again for my last year. Like girl, it's your last year, like you're gonna be like, so what did I do senior year? Like, you know what I mean? I'll go over like a little debrief of how classes went a little later. But just to let you guys know where my, where I'm at right now. I'm just like high stress, high anxiety right now. Because I also haven't ate any breakfast and I normally eat breakfast. This week is like a week where you're just gonna see the real and raw. Because I normally meal prep, but I had something going on with money. Um, so that like messed up me meal prepping. And then now I'm just headed to Trader Joe's. Moral of the story, you need to eat before you do anything. And I'm on my cycle right now, so I haven't ate breakfast and it's like 12 o'clock, it's lunchtime. I normally eat breakfast, lunch and dinner. I'm just like that girl that literally has to eat every, you know, meal. Or else I go insane and right now I'm kinda going insane. Um, I don't even know what I'm gonna get at Trader Joe's, that's the funny thing. I'm just hungry, like, I don't care, I don't even care. Give me a bagel with no, no spread, like that's how hungry I am right now. Uh, you see it, you see how I can't even relax right now? That's how stressed I am. Like I'm over here like sitting up like this, like where is my food? Let's go into Trader Joe's, see if they got something going there. Okay y'all, so I just got out of Trader Joe's. That place was so stimulating, it's not even funny. There was so many people in there. I was just trying to find my favorites. Um, I'm gonna show you some of my Trader Joe's favorites. Because I feel like that's just essential to the college life. Like now I understand why college students go to Trader Joe's. Everything is so easy to just grab and go. Considering I do not have the time to cook right now, so easy. But I have been trying to stay away from prepackaged foods. But I like to give Trader Joe's my exception for that when I really need it. And um, this is just the time where I really need it. I'm about to call my boyfriend because I wanna see what he doing. Cause I need to find a place to study, like I like studying at coffee shops and stuff. But like, I don't know, I studied at his house the other day and it was just a vibe. I got a lot done, so I'm like, hey, this man at the gym. Looking at his location, let me see, let me see what I can do, let me call him. Let's see if he wants me over, that's the case, that's the thing. Hey Squish? Um, a little bit, I, I, I see that you're at the gym. Cause I checked your location before I called you. Oh, cause I wanted to come over again. Okay y'all, I'm really trying to get used to this whole G I Osmo Pocket camera. Let me know how y'all liking the quality. I like a specific vibe to my videos. And I'm not sure if it's giving Kayla vibing with Kay, you know? Cause when it comes to my brand, okay, I'm glad y'all, but no, for real. Like when it comes to my brand, like does it feel like vibing with Kayla? You know what I mean? If it don't, either way I'ma keep the camera because first off, crack my face. Um, first off, I paid a lot of money for this camera. So it just might not be as used or used for specific reasons, you know? I'm like, is this a YouTube camera? I know like a lot of people are using it for YouTube, but does it feel like vibing with Kay? You know what I mean? So let me know in the comment. And let me put on a screen y'all, how many people are watching but not subscribed? And how many people, I don't even know if I could look at this in my analytic, of how many people are watching me? But not commenting, like, ah, the devil, the devil, the devil. The fact that y'all don't comment is what's keeping people from like not being able to watch me. And if y'all trying to gaykeep me, y'all trying to gaykeep my channel, just let me know. Let me know for real, because I think that's what y'all doing. Like, let me give you all a little word right now, cause this is what's really true. Hey, I'm coming out. People in the parking lot don't be looking at what they doing. Let me give y'all a word. A lot of people, um, whenever, if you decide you wanna do content or whatever, let me just tell you, there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna watch you, but they're not gonna support you. The difference between watching and then supporting. But on YouTube, you can watch and support at the same time. So if you don't like me, still supporting me at the end of the day. Oh, like I said, like I be getting like a lot of views on some of my Instagram posts. And tell me why, it'd be like 200 people liking. 200 people is a lot. But what I'm trying to say is, imagine there's like 10,000 views on a post and only 200 people are watching. Like, the world is so envious, it's not even cra- it's not even crazy? No, it's crazy. Because how you gonna watch me but not like like my pose? Like, I get it, you not like my outfit, dude? I don't know, I don't really get it, but then I get it, no. I understand why y'all doing it, but like, be for real, like just unfollow me at that point. Because I'd rather have somebody like that's following me and genuinely like my content. Versus like people that just following me for no reason and just wanna hate and stuff like that. Like that's just so messed up. But yeah, I'm finna head over to my boyfriend's house. Um, I'm finna walk Milo. You guys, don't follow me on Instagram, I do have a puppy. This man, we call him now Milo the Destroyo, the Destroyer? Milo the Destroyer, okay, that's the word. Because he keep, he keep destroying stuff. Like, I have to show y'all a picture. This man just like ripped up a rug. Um, my boyfriend also sent me a photo of this man digging holes. It's like he trying to bury somebody, like you ain't got nobody to bury. Let alone you ain't even got a dog bone, cause you that bad right now. Yeah, he bad right now. I'm finna walk him because my boyfriend does not walk him as much as he needs to. And I always get on him about that, but when I come over, I need to make sure that I walk him. That's just gonna be like my, my sanity thing. Because right now I have a lot of homework that's due. I'm really kinda stressed about it, if I'm being quite honest with y'all. It's like not demure, not mindful, because you wanted to wait last minute, so this is what you get yourself into. The song I'm listening to by uh, Corinne Hossler? Talking about crying, like it's okay to cry, like, girl. I really need to stop playing with y'all because y'all really don't be knowing what I be doing. What I mean by that is like, I just be joking and like I be cutting this part out of the video. Like, I should really be for real start keeping it in there. So if y'all meet me in person, like just realize we besties, okay? Like I met another bestie recently. And she was so cool, I have to tell y'all about that experience. I was like, so tell me why I was like pulling up, looking for a park. Mind you, the parking lot at school was hella packed. And I'm like, you know what, I'm tired of going in circles, I'm just gonna go right here. So I go into that like little parking spot. Tell me why somebody, a girl pulls up and I'm getting on my car. And she said, vibing with Kay? I was like, hey girl, what's up, what's good with you? Like, where you headed, what's your major, like let's get deep right now? I don't play, like, I'm a girl that wants to get deep, I'm sorry. I'm just not a surface level girl. Um, I used to be, if I'm being quite honest, like, well actually, I don't think I ever was a surface girl. Surface level girl, like stop playing with yourself. Like I was just a person that was just always quiet, you know? So like I wanted people to ask me questions and I'mma answer. But I'm at the point in my life where I'm just kind of an open book about my life and advice. If I can answer and God has given me the wisdom for it, for sure, for sure. After I came out about my testimony, even a little bit prior, but it just feels so good to walk in freedom. Like, um, this is your encouragement if you uh, haven't already, to share your testimony. But obviously when the time is right and don't be afraid to, like, you know? It's okay, like, definitely okay to share. Y'all, my hair be really bothering me, like, look at this. I don't know what's going on. Like, I feel like when I re- when I look back at this video, I'm gonna be like, your hair was just fine. Or not, I don't know. This is why I don't wear my hair down, cause like I just like overthink or just look too much at my hair and then I just do this. Hey, what is, what's wrong with you? I have no idea what's going on. Let me fix her and come back, I was trying to do my haul for y'all. Okay, I think this is giving Messy Bun vibes, right? Here, okay, so here's my little Trader Joe's bag, I'm gonna do a little holly situation. I'm like right in front of his windows to get that natural light going. But I got these cinnamon swirl raisin bagels. These are one of my favorites. I don't really like raisins, but the taste of these, so good. This one, just the organic one, the organic plain cream cheese bread. Um, it tastes like regular cream cheese, you know? Um, I don't know the difference, but this one? Probably might be a little bit more healthier. Not everything that's organic is considered like healthy, like you know? But, I have no, I have no clue. Um, then I got one of my favorite snacks. This is my recent favorite snack from Trader Joe's is the organic mini cheese sandwich crackers. These are like, is it Ritz crackers? I think Ritz crackers has, I can't think of it. Have you ever seen that little thing where it's like, it's like the cracker and the cheese and you dip it? Like this is what it tastes like, but like a healthier version, because it's also organic. And it tastes really, really good, it has less sugar. Fifteen minutes. Alright, so the next thing is I just got these like organic chocolate chip. Uh, granola bars? Haven't tried these, but I like anything with chocolate in it, I'm like, might as well. This is my other favorite like dinner to get at Trader Joe's, it's the chicken pot pie. This thing went up, I think it's about, it was like seven or eight dollars or something? I'm like dang, like, but it is pretty good, okay, it's really good. This thing lasts me probably like two days, like two dinners. Um, I don't know who these here is, let me tell you. Because I never really like did this, growing up in a black household. Look at serving sizes, because you probably be eating the whole thing and the serving size be like this small. So when I, when I was like really getting into like my nutrition and then making sure I'm eating the right things and the right amounts, I was looking at serving sizes and that really shook my world. Because I was eating way more than I should have and that's probably why I was like really exhausted throughout my days. And just felt like this heaviness. And it's usually through what I'm eating and the amount, so make sure you check that. And then this next one I got is this ricotta spinach filled ravioli. It just looked good, I love pasta, I love cheese, so I don't know how this is gonna taste, but I wanted to try it, so. Thought I would pair this with like some rice. So uh, yeah, it's pretty quick and easy, I just pop this in the oven. Um, it don't taste the same in a microwave versus the oven, so I like to put it in the oven. And then my last favorite snack is this uh, milk chocolate. It's like milk chocolate and dark chocolate almonds. But every time I eat this, I only eat one at a time, like I only eat all the milk chocolate. And then I only eat all of the dark chocolate. And eating both and back and forth, it ta- it like messes with my taste buds. Cause I'm like, my mind thinks I'm finna get a milk chocolate, but then no, you put a dark chocolate in your mouth and you're just like, this tastes weird, but I like both. I personally like both milk and dark chocolate. So, so that's it for my little Trader Joe's haul. I got this little Trader Joe's bag when I went thrifting and I just love her. Cause everybody, every time I have this thing, people look at me like, hmm, where she get that? And I'll be like, my head like, yeah, you wish you, you wish that was you. Okay, so right now I am gonna be eating my little lunch and then chilling for a little bit, probably like, I'm gonna give myself like 30 minutes to chill and eat and then get into my homework and everything. I'm eating the orange chicken that I made and then um, my boyfriend helped me make some rice. Um, right now he's not here, he went to a meeting, cause he has a mentor. We both have our own mentors and it's really cool because when we both go to our own mentor meetings and stuff, we like to talk about just a little bit of what we talked about in our mentor meetings. Even though our mentor meetings are like a private thing, because it's, you know, allowed us to speak a lot about just personal things that we're going through in our twenties and everything. So I actually, one thing I actually um, prayed for, for him, like when we were dating, well, we're still dating, okay, like we married some. Um, when, before we started dating was the fact that like I really wanted him to have a mentor. Cause I think having a mentor is so important and just such a thing that not everybody has. But I think it's a good thing to have, especially around this time of everyone, like you know, either graduating college, trying to figure out life, just somebody to be there alongside with you. It just feels more comfortable, just kinda like reminds you that you're not doing it alone. And, mm, oh. Amen. So, yeah. Y'all, this orange chicken is so good. It tastes different than like Panda Express orange chicken, you know? It's more of like a sweet, but chill type of chicken, I don't know how to put it, but it tastes really, really good. And I'm just so hungry, but always does this thing where like, when I come over to his house, he's really good at serving, so like he makes sure I get the top notch, like, he's not just gonna give me a glass of water, he gonna put the ice in there, he gonna put the straw and everything, like. Like, look at this right here. This is my little setup, so I have my like orange chicken right here and everything. He gave me a few napkins, which kind of a lot, but, and then I'm just like watching Netflix. This is just so cute, cause he even put the tray out for me too. Very, very demure, very thoughtful. I hope like this is like so real, because like people always show like the cute parts of being in school, like just the aesthetic of studying. But like, sometimes it's really just not aesthetic, like nothing about college sometime really be aesthetic. Once you get to midterms and stuff, it's like people just are romanticizing it. And you know, I tried my best to romanticize it as well, but like, there's just times where I'm just like really tired and just kinda like stressed about it. It's only for a season and I feel like when I look back when I get older, I'm just gonna be like, be for real Kayla, you were like stressed over a little test? Yes, oh, the Holy Spirit just gave me a word. He said, in certain seasons, how do I put this? Oh, in certain seasons, some things are gonna be bigger than what they seem. Wow, he really be speaking. In certain seasons, some things are gonna be bigger than what they seem. Like you're gonna be in that next season and you'll be like, I was really tripping over that? But yes, in that moment, it was so big to you, like in that moment, you didn't know how to deal with it. But now that you know how to deal with it, it's so tiny, it's so small to you, that you just look back at it like, why was I even tripping over that, you know? Okay, I want you guys to see the difference between me filming on the DJI Osmo Pocket 3 um, without using this mic. Um, you can only get this mic with the Creator Combo and we will see how you guys like the audio. It's literally telling me that it's at 60%, but this is the audio for it. Um, it's actually pretty good, I'd say myself. I've had better, if I'm being quite honest, like the Rode mic, 10 out of 10. But it also costs probably way more, but I love the Rode mic. I use that with my um, Sony camera. But I do wanna talk about my school and what's going on, college wise, where I'm at and everything. Cause I, I really like neglect talking about that, just because I don't like to think too far ahead. I like to make sure I'm also in the present moment. And the more I look too far ahead, the more I get stressed about what's yet to come. And that's not even something that I should be worried about, because it's not my will or doing, it's God's will and what he has for me and wants for me. So I kinda just like focus on what he's giving me right now and like be all in with that. And I actually enjoy life like that, so. Just a reminder, if you're too far ahead and you're thinking like, oh my gosh, like what am I gonna do in grad school? Like, how am I gonna pay for it, like, where are you now? Like you literally prayed to be where you are, so why aren't you soaking it all in, you know? And I think that's helped me a lot with my outlook on college is, I don't really have anything to complain about, because where I'm, where I am is something that I prayed about. And um, it was really hard for me to grasp that, because a lot of college students can honestly start to complain a lot, because it is stressful. But to be in a position to even go to college, to get a degree, to have food to eat when you get back home, to even have a home that can like rest in, you know? There's many other circumstances that can be far more worse, but it's like, I think it's not always a good thing to say, like somebody has it worse, because those are actual people's lives, you know? So I don't know what the other word I would use that for, I don't know what other like saying I would use, but yeah. Every time I use this mic, I start opening up with a life lesson that y'all probably never asked for. But um, so at school right now, I'm doing a IEP assignment and I don't know if you guys watched my testimony video? I actually grew up with IEP, IEP is a individualized education program. And it's basically for somebody that has a disability, whether that be intellectual or physical. This IEP is to help somebody into something that they're not strong in. So what I'm doing is writing the IEP for a 10-year-old girl that has Down syndrome. Pretty much, I'm writing goals for her, but the class that I'm taking that I showed a little bit about, is called APE, which is adapted physical education. And this class is something that I really enjoyed and like not a lot of my peers decided to take this class, because it does show that on like rate my professor, that it's a lot of work. I don't know if I wanna like let other people's opinions about a class dictate if I should take one. Sometimes that can be a good thing, like, sometimes it's like whatever people say about a professor or rate my professor, you should look at and be like, mm, I don't know if I should take that, you know? But then there's some times where it's like, you should try it out. And this is one of the ones, one of the class where I just took a risk, because I really wanna grow in the field that I really wanna go to, go into. And I feel like learning about disabilities and being hands-on with it is gonna help me a lot in physical therapy or just wherever I decide to go, or wherever God, this, wherever God places me, let's just say that. Just because there are many people that are in the kin world. What I mean by kin world, I mean like just physical. And a lot of like going, people going to the gym usually kinda starts off, can start off with a disability. Like, okay, I cannot do this, but I'm gonna go to the gym and I'm gonna keep doing this and then I'm gonna progress, you know what I mean? There's some people that, that are paralyzed from waist down that still go to the gym and so on and so forth. And I don't wanna exclude people that have disabilities outside of my agenda of working, like how I perceive my job or whatever. And the job that I do wanna go into, which is physical therapy, it's based on people with disabilities. But where I work right now at a physical therapy clinic, yeah, they, students are people with disabilities that are more on a severe level where I'm at right now. And um, I think it's really good to just be around it, because being a student, you just kinda normalize that everybody is able-bodied and is able to do the things that you can do. But if you just step into somebody else's world, you'll realize that a lot of the things that we do are not always easy as they are. I don't know, like being in this feels so refreshing and so eye-opening, like I just love it. It just always reminds me of like the goodness of God and how detailed he is. And it's just so amazing to see what also God places on people's hearts to make. For example, somebody that's a wheel, a wheelchair user, has a hard time, can have a hard time like getting up ramps or going into classrooms. But God placed on somebody's heart to make a door that can auto, that you could just press and then it just opens for somebody that can go through that door. If you watch this, you probably like, dang, you just to get a little too deep. Well, it's not too deep when, it's not too deep, because there's actually people that go through struggles like this on a day-to-day basis and we don't even take the time to just sit and be like, wow. I would be so frustrated if I was in that position. Imagine like struggling just to walk in a door, like that's just, it actually annoys me. It actually really annoys me, the fact that like somebody has to go through that every day. Let alone just get in their car, let alone just go into a grocery store, like, because, okay, I can go on and on about the things that people are doing wrong, doing wrong in America with disabilities, but, because we talk a lot about this in my class. But yeah, that's what I'm basically doing. So for an example, what I'm doing for Maria, which is the ca- it's this case study that I'm doing. We have to be very, very detailed and specific with these, with these uh, progression. So Maria has Down syndrome and we're gonna teach her how to improve her dribbling skills. So how are we gonna progress it? Um, I put down, Maria will be able to, Maria will improve her basketball dribbling skills, being able to consistently dribble the ball at waist length for 10 consecutive dribbles with a 70% success rates during the class. And she's gonna start this tomorrow and then the stop date is gonna be June 1st. So this whole entire time, she's gonna be, we're gonna teach her how to dribble a ball from waist length, but 10 times, like consecutively, like back to back. And how are we gonna progress, how are we gonna put this in little increments? These are the benchmarks. By, on the first, she's gonna basically dribble the ball consecutive. She's gonna dribble the ball at waist length five times with verbal prompts. Verbal prompts just means like, I'm gonna verbally tell her, hey Maria, we're gonna dribble the ball like right here. Like that's how we're gonna dribble it, we're gonna dribble at waist length, or I'm just gonna say it and not show. And then the second one is Bria will dribble the ball at waist length eight consecutive dribbles, visual prompts. Meaning I'm gonna show her, like maybe a picture or maybe I'm gonna show her, like this is how many times we're gonna do this. You see, it's gonna come to my waist. And then the last one, well, which is the last uh, time period, so there's like three benchmarks for it, for this. And then you have an annual goal, which is crazy. I know it gets really detailed. Um, it says, then I put, Maria will dribble the ball at waist height for 10 consecutive dribbles with no more than two verbal cues. So by this time, we've been dribbling for a couple of months now. You've been dribbling at waist length, you know? I'm only gonna tell her twice as she dribbles this ball. But she has to do it 10 times, but I'm only gonna tell her twice, hey Maria, we gotta keep it at waist length. She drops it, if she ju- uh, dribbles it a little too high, it's the last cue, I'm gonna say, hey Maria. She drops it, if she ju- uh, dribbles it a little too high, it's the last cue. I'm gonna say, hey, Maria, keep it, keep it here, keep it here. So that's kind of a little uh, part of what I'm doing right now. It sounds very easy. It's very detailed in what I have to write on here. And then I also have to put materials, like what are the types of materials I'm gonna need for this, um, or it's not a lesson actually, for this assessment. Cuz we're testing her on her, on this, on the skill. We're gonna need a basketball. We're gonna need some markers, like something to put on the floor so she doesn't just start dribbling and walking away or like dribbling and dribbling it very high. Gotta be very specific. And then the methods that I'm gonna use are visual and verbal prompts. So, actually kinda really like this class. It's just very tedious and time-consuming. And reflecting on today with my class and being able to, uh, assess someone with disabilities, I'm, I'm learning that like when you talk to somebody that has a disability, you don't have to talk to them as if they're a baby or something. Cuz I think when we hear that somebody has a disability, that doesn't always mean that you gotta be like, oh, hey, come on, let's go. You don't have to be super animated, like depending on their disability or depending on their age, you know? Like, you don't have to get to that level. I don't know. You know how when like people talk to babies? Like, hey, I tend to do that, but I should stop. Probably when I have a baby, I should stop doing it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. Why get on their level if you can literally just talk to them like normal? The baby, they will progress more. The students that are coming into my class that I'm assessing or like teaching them lessons, they're literally the same age as me, like, the student that I, um, had today, he was about nineteen or eighteen. So, um, talking to them like, hey, like, come on. You don't really need to do all that, so, but I did have more of like this positive like spirit when I'm talking to them. The way you talk to them will determine if they wanna do the task. So if you come in the classroom like, come on, like, let's go over here. Let's go start running these five laps. Okay, then all the kids are gonna be like, I don't really wanna do this, like, I'm tired. Because you have that energy, but if somebody, if you had a good teacher that was like, alright, y'all, let's go, we're gonna hit this, like, you know, we're gonna do all this. Then it's like you're more enthusiastic about it. You're like, okay, I'm ready. I can do this, like, you know? That's why it depends on the professor you have and all that stuff, where like the class is just really fun. This is Milo getting his, um, day. His toe cut. Y'all, he do not wanna. I don't even think he cares.
There we go. Nice in a trend.
That sounds, it sounds so bad, but it's not really.
It does. You not done yet, boy.
The one time he doesn't wanna lay down.
Yeah, boy. Stay.
Alright, gentlemen, buddy.
Relax, 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 relax.
Y'all, I literally just turned in that assignment that took me, I started about, wait, let me see what time I started cuz I think I started around six because I've started to walk Milo and then like, let me see. Oh, I probably started way later than I thought. Okay, so I started around like six thirty because I'm looking at the time of some videos that I took of me and Milo on the walk and I was walking back to my boyfriend's house around six, so I roughly probably got back to his house at like six thirty and then like started this assignment. So I honestly think I did pretty good. Um, so if I start at six thirty, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Wow. Five hours. I'd say it took roughly probably like four to five hours because I did take a shower just now, not that long ago, right when I got home and then, um, you know, just like little breaks of using the bathroom and all that stuff and probably being on my phone. So I think I did really good. I just turned it into my TA, not my TA. My, um, TA in one of my classes, so she's gonna review it and then give me comments. But that took so long, y'all, when I tell you. I was on ChatGPT looking for ideas because I just couldn't, I didn't have the creative mindset at the time. I'm a creative, but like, sometimes I really be burnt out towards like, I got nothing. I got nothing. And then the Lord dropped like this little, dropped like a, a vision in my head and I was like, okay, I wanna go with that. And then I started like using what I had and typing into ChatGPT to generate more ideas. And I was like, okay, wait, I don't like that one, but I like this one, so I'm gonna do this. So that helped me a lot. That is it, y'all. This is real reality when I don't wanna do an assignment and the real reality when I actually procrastinate cuz I really procrastinated in this video. Oh, tomorrow I have work, so I am up a little late for me to have work in the morning. I work at eight thirty, which is considered a little bit later for me since I've been waking up around like seven every day because of my classes. So it feels like I can sleep in a little bit. Yeah, so that's the end of today's video. I hope y'all enjoyed it. If you guys like more videos with this camera right here, let me know cuz I don't even know if it's a vibe or not. And then second, if you like this video, give it a thumbs up. And then also, if you are in college, comment. Like, if you, um, are in school or anything, just comment anything about school or whatever, like encouragement cuz, um, this is my last semester, no, my last year, so I'm on that last drive, y'all, and I'm just like, ugh. That's why things are getting done a little bit later. Thank you guys for coming along with me on this journey, on the realist journey because you're gonna see a lot of videos on YouTube that show like day in the life of college, but like, I got some videos, some college videos of me crying in my dorm. So if you wanna see the realists, definitely go check out my other ones and I'll link, um, my like college videos or vlogs in the little eye in the corner, just to let you know, I've grown a lot since those videos, so if you see me acting a little courageous, no, that was just a time of my life, but I'll see you guys in another video. Bye, guys.